I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Did I apologize? I didn't bring our name tag.
First, we're going to do the public input statement, so if the vice chair will please read the rules.
Okay. The first public input session is a 15-minute session with each person having no longer than three minutes in which to make a statement. A second public input session may be held at the end of the meeting if allowed by the board chair. The speaker will give his or her name, address, and reason for speaking. Public input is designated for district residents. The board chair may grant non-residents the opportunity to address the board. Statements concerning subject matter that falls under the law regarding executive sessions cannot be made during public input, for example, matters involving personnel. Is there any public input?
No comments from anyone? All right. Okay. In that case, we're going to move on to item number four, the minutes of the December 2nd meeting. Any commentary on that?
Why does it say December 2nd?
No. It should be the...
It was.
Yeah, sorry.
Just as noted at the bottom, that I think was a reminder who first and seconded a motion.
Okay. And it was still stuck on the bottom?
It's still there.
Okay. Please take it off. Okay.
Any other comments? Can I get a motion to accept as amended?
I'll make that motion.
The second?
The second.
All in favor?
I was not here.
Okay. So, one abstention. Oh, okay. Mm-hmm. All right. The student report. Caitlin?
All right. So, Sam isn't here tonight, but to start, right after those snow days we had, we did have the blood drive, and that was a huge success. We collected around 28 units, which could potentially save 84 lives. Both junior and senior pods for downstairs participated in the giving tree, so a few community members were able to get an extra hand with gifts or necessities for the holidays. We wrapped those up and sent them off yesterday or today, as well as community projects in general around the school for National Honor Society. A lot of students are getting into, like, food drives for home games. You can give a box or a can to get in instead of paying the $2 admission, as well as hat and mittens drives. Those are in Cumberland Farms in North Berwick and different areas around the town. So, that's a really cool project as well. And I also just wanted to add, I'm sure you guys know about it, but the Wellness Club here, which meets in KT's on Wednesday, where they do work on overall happiness and health. They do guided meditations, guided breathings. They made smoothies last week, so it's really cool. So, a lot of things in the short little time we've been back from Rake. But, yeah, that's all.
Thanks for that.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Of course. And I will share that with you.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. Financial summary.
Okay. So, I'm going to just pass out this as our monthlies for y'all. As of the end of November, two, three, four. There's... Everything's kind of on track. Nothing too scary, which is nice. Pass that down. Again, you know, a lot of things have already been encumbered, so it looks like 100% of things or 99% of things have been expended. It's just because of the financial... Any of the salaries and stuff have been encumbered already for the remainder of the year, so it shows there. I wonder if you have any questions about it? It's nothing... The good news is, is we're on track to spend our funds. It's a good thing.
Does anyone have any questions? Are we good? Okay. On to number seven, the building committee update.
So, this happened Monday, and I was not available to be there, so I'm speaking from my conversation that I had with Denise this afternoon, because she was there. Nancy was there, too, so she can help fill in whatever blanks I might leave. They met with Alan Cunningham, who is the architect from CHA, who's been sort of spearheading the work for us, and just talked about what needs to happen in the next, basically, two or three months to move forward in terms of trying to make some plans about the idea of the three building projects and also the revolving renovation fund that we're trying to apply to and get some funds for. Basically, there were, like, six action items that came out of it. I'm going to see if I can remember them by heart, but I might not. One of which is to get, in the next, in the first couple of weeks of January, some meetings at each of the buildings, so that in Lebanon, North Berwick, and Berwick, that we meet with the sort of key people that are looking at the designs for our new buildings. So, special ed's part of that, food services part of that, the facilities with Kevin will be part of that, some of the key teachers in the buildings, just to look at what kind of needs are going to be addressed and to go forward with that. So, those will be set up within, hopefully, that first two weeks of January. There's a plan for that. There's also a process of interviewing the candidates for the smaller projects that have been put together. There are two firms that have applied, one of which is CHA and the other one, I cannot remember off the top of my head. So, there... Those interview processes will have to happen again in that first couple of weeks of January to make some decisions about who's going to go forward with those smaller projects. Okay, Nancy, can you help me out? Let's see.
Here, you have a thing I remember was, we were given floor plans of each existing building.
Yes.
And I don't know if Kevin was going to do this, but somebody was going to do this to go to each building, and they want to know exactly what goes on in each room.
Right.
Of each school.
Right.
What it's being used for and...
Right. So, they're going to be looking at the actual... How are things actually being allocated right now, and what's the future look like, and what are our needs based on that? So, that was definitely one of those things. The other piece that we talked about is the sprinkling of some of the buildings. If additions are made, that will put us to a capacity where it requires sprinkler systems in the buildings. So, those are built in right now into the actual amount of funds that we're going to request, you know, when we go out to bond at some point. However, if the revolving renovation fund works for us in a positive way, that money can be allocated ahead of time, and so that will come off of the big, the bigger bond bill. So, that's a good thing. There was some clarification of that. So, there's work going forward. There's people from each of the towns, just community members that are working on the program as well. Rick Ingalls, Mr. McIntyre, I'm not remembering his first name off the top of my head. Mike McIntyre, that's it. Yep. And Deb Randall from North Berwick. So, they've provided some good input as well from their end of it. So, they were going to meet again on January 22nd, and we'll provide more information from there.
Okay. All right. The selection process for a new superintendent. The minutes have two things to which. We're going to start with the pros and cons of working with the Main School Management Association, because that's really the first thing that we need to consider, and Denise is going to...
Did you get a chance to make copies?
Oh.
That's okay. You know what I'm going to do? I'm going to forward the board the email that has the three attachments.
Okay. I apologize. We talked about it, but didn't get to it.
So, just give me just a moment.
Because you're not going to have had time to look at this ahead of time, I'm not asking for any decisions tonight, but just want to kind of go over what that option would entail, what that could look like.
So, what's the difference between what we're doing now and the workshop?
The workshop is to develop the characteristics, the goals that we're looking for going forward in the candidate.
Oh.
This is more of a logistical thing right now. Main School Management offers services for superintendent searches, and they range from a full-on, full-meal deal, where you could have them run the whole show, to à la carte pieces, where you can say, "Yeah, we're going to use them for developing the brochure," or "They're going to do this piece of it." And it really depends on how we would like to go forward in terms of how much input you want from your side of the table, how much you want from myself, actually, as well, and whatever is the druthers of the board, really. Obviously, there's a... Fees attached to what MSMA offers.
One of the things that you're getting emailed is this à la carte menu, if you will, of the services that they offer, and...
Is it working?
I don't know if I'm sending the right thing. Can you... Do you have the email that I...
I do. Let me find it.
Can you forward it more efficiently than me?
But there's basically the last...
I mean, if it worked. No. I think I was just sending the wrong part of the...
I'll send it to you in a second.
Okay. But basically, when you get it, you'll see that the four-page thing, the last two pages is a listing of services and costs. And Denise and I have been talking with Sue and trying to figure out, you know, just how much do we need to spend on their doing the things? How much can we handle in-house?
Yeah. So, the... There's the... In the email that Sue will...
It's coming. It's coming. There are a couple of different documents. One is a brochure. It's their brochure of, like, sort of, you know, to us what their services are. So, that's kind of a summary. And then there is a general scope of work, which is going to look like that, and then the other one has kind of more of a menu of things. So, I think the... I guess the important thing that I learned was that we had sort of gone into it thinking that we either had to choose to work with them for the whole thing or not at all, but they really do everything à la carte. So...
Sending right now.
And then, in the general scope of work, it is... It's the general scope of their work, but I actually thought it was a really helpful kind of overview of the process, because, you know, if for some reason we had them do the whole thing, that they would... This is what they would do, which if we do it all in-house, that's what we're going to have to do. So, it's kind of a good, high-level checklist. The... In the cost proposal, I think, in, you know, sort of just initial talking to Sue, it seems like in-house, we have pretty good systems set up for putting, you know, posting the job, you know. We don't necessarily need them. We already have a job description. There's some things that, you know, I think we've got to handle on here, but we think that there could possibly be some useful pieces, possibly around advertising, and Astrid is going to kind of walk through the timeline in a bit, but towards the end of the timeline, there'll be a larger kind of community forum, and there may be some assistance that they could provide around that, some surveys, that type of thing. So, I think that there are pieces that we feel, certainly from a cost standpoint, like, it doesn't make sense to spend the money, but also that we, you know, have some pretty good systems set up and some people that have been through the process before, which is good. So...
Basically, what... Excuse me. What I'm asking for tonight is sort of a board vote on, are you good with the idea of picking and choosing from their services, should we decide that we want, you know, this aspect or that aspect? Without getting specific, just in general, are you good with the idea?
I need to do the paper yet.
I think it's a concept that they're asking about.
Right.
It's like, if we were... Would the board be okay with us utilizing some services along the way, because they have a, you know, they have that expertise, but not... Maybe not the whole shebang. So, if we were going to go the whole shebang, we would have to be asking for that, for board approval of that right away. So, we're not asking for that, but we're also not saying it's a complete, you know...
We don't even know yet what aspects.
Right.
But is it okay to consider...
Contracting them for some services.
Right. But, for example, developing a brochure.
Do we have funds set aside for this?
Well, since we didn't know about this, I would say that's a big fad, though.
Yeah. Which is part of the reason we're trying to do as much as we can in-house.
The... In looking through these, I mean, I feel like if we use some of their services, we could get a decent amount out of it by not spending more than $2,500. So, I don't think it's a... It's not like a huge expense, something, but I can't imagine that we would need to go over that, I don't think.
Okay. Did that... Did that come through?
Yes.
Okay.
Great. So, you can take a peek at it if you want to and...
The page with the cost is like the second document, and it's page three and four. Right now, we're potentially considering survey samples, brochure development, potentially development of print ads and online posting. And they have graphic advertisement development and electronic circulation listed as complementary, but I don't know if that would hold true if we don't buy a whole lot of them.
Can you just give us all the free stuff?
Yeah. So, there might be a cost associated with that, which we would find out about first. So, we're not talking a great deal here. And like I said, I think most of this is something that we would know in-house, and in terms of the brochure development, we would know by the next board meeting whether or not we would be asking to...
For the brochure development?
Yeah.
Well, I guess I have a question about the process.
Sure.
We don't even have a committee together yet, and you're making these decisions.
Well, we have to...
Have to start the process.
We have to start, yeah.
If we decide to send this process out, then it changes the process that we have. So, step one is familiarize yourself with this. Take a look. I'm just asking for a general, are you good with the idea of even considering an outside for a handful of the objects, not for the whole process?
Because I just... I just remember when this, when we started this, it was somebody said, don't ask me who. I don't remember, that we would use them a lot for the beginning of the whole process.
That's how it was before, and they've changed what they're doing or how they're doing it now. It's a lot more pick and choose than it was when we went through this last time as a district. Why don't we not worry about a vote today?
Yeah, that's fine.
Because you definitely need time to look at this, but take a look, and then when we meet on the second, we can ask some more targeted questions. We should have, by then, also have more of an idea of what, if anything, we'd be asking for.
Plus, Joanne, who's gone through it before, I think.
Right.
She wants to see it. I mean, and she's...
Okay. All right. So, let's move on to the next thing, which is...
If members of the community want to, young search community, how would they go about...
We're talking about that next.
Yeah. Good question.
Exactly. So, the hiring committee... Okay. You know what? I'm going to do the timeline next, because I think that will answer some questions, and then we can circle back to the committee. Right now, we are looking to, as soon as possible, place advertisements, get it out there right after the holidays, have January and the first few weeks of February for potential candidates to submit their resumes. So, the closing date for resumes would be February 15th. During the month of January and the early part of February, the hiring committee would be formed, and that would mean putting the word out to the community, high community, to, if you're interested in being a member of the board, to... Or of the committee, rather, to contact us, and we will be selecting three board members, two to three administrators, two to three teachers, two to three community members, and hopefully, two students, to be on this initial hiring committee. It's not a first-come, first-served basis thing. It is put your hat in the ring, and, you know, names will be considered to try to have as broad a view of the community, the district, as possible. In late February, the initial candidate screening will happen with the three board members who are on the hiring committee with Sue as an advisor. Not vote, but an advisor. The first week of March will be the first round of interviews, which is where the hiring committee comes into play. The idea would be to have about four to six people interviewed during that week. The second week of March, have our top three candidates make presentations, have tours of the schools, meet and greets with the teachers, administration, and students, and community forum, where they would each present their case, if you will. And then, the week of April 6th would be their final interviews with the entire school board. Everybody here gets a vote on the final candidate. Hopefully, we'll have three finalists. And then, the decision will be made, and on April 16th, the board vote on the winning candidate, so that they can then go ahead and give notice to their district if they are currently a superintendent, so that they're ready to start July 1st.
So, I have a question. The meeting before the 16th, what happened at that meeting?
That's the final... The week of April 6th, so not just...
Yeah.
It's not at a board meeting.
But the hiring committee makes the recommendation of the finalists to the board.
Right. And the board will meet during that week of April 6th, hopefully, if all our timelines work, to make our selection.
Okay.
To interview the three finalists and make the selection.
So, the board...
No, no, no.
The board will be hearing from all three?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Just have one big word that needs to be factored in here. Budget season?
Yeah.
Well, that's two words.
I know.
With the summation of the other.
That's a lot of meetings.
It is, but we have...
Which is, I think, the point of trying to make, like, the committees be able to be focused on different areas, so that it's not everybody... I don't know. It's going to be a lot.
It is, but we have this... We need the new person, if at all possible.
We don't have a choice.
To be ready July 1st, and so, working backwards, that's what it looks like. So, yeah, it's going to be a year.
Yeah.
Where do they advertise for these... You know, where do they put the advertisements, like, teaching magazines?
Yeah. Well, so you can do national if you choose to.
If you choose to. There's a lot of local in terms of, like, through school spring, and I can't remember the drum and maul, but it's attached to that as well. I mean, you should also... We should look at LinkedIn. We should look at any of the ones that have good professional opportunities for folks. The New England Secondary School Program will probably do it through that as well, because that'll hit all the New England states. And then, you can decide whether or not you want to go something like Ed Week or any of the national magazines. You can talk about that. Yeah. So, I think we can utilize... Main School Management does their piece of advertising. We can look at what they are doing, and if that's... Does it take care of everything? If it does, great. If it doesn't, then we can look at other options as well.
Sue, if we ended up doing a brochure either ourselves or through these guys...
Yeah.
Does the brochure sort of point people back to where that job posting is, or what's the connection there?
Yeah. So, it would do all of that. Do that piece of it, and where to send your applications and all that.
Okay. So, there's sort of the answer to where it's posted, but then there's this possible broader just advertisement.
Yeah. Yeah. It's a different world than it was just even when we were hiring Steve, you know, where things go. It's a big, broader world, so...
Okay. Any further questions on the timeline or what the process is?
Because you could go into May if you had to.
We could.
You don't want to.
Well, the issue is about...
It may end up...
There's a 60-day, typically a 60-day timeframe for somebody to be released from services. So, April's really... It's pushing up as far as it goes. I mean, you know, we can do whatever, but if... I don't know that... It's doable. It's going to be busy, for sure, but I think it's doable.
There's... We sort of figured that the timeframe of when we're open to getting candidates also provides a good amount of time to kind of get the process together, so those two things can happen at the same time.
Yeah. Yeah. You know, if we can get the advertisement out soon, then that allows six weeks of...
Because January is not that far away.
No. That's why... I just want to make it through Christmas right now.
Originally, we talked about just having it open January, and then we're like, that's not...
You're not going to be ready in time?
Yeah.
Okay. So, finally, the hiring committee itself. So, again, the hiring committee is responsible for bringing the finalists to the entire board, and logistically, procedurally, it makes sense for the board chair and vice chair to be on that committee. And as it happens, we represent two different towns, so we would like a representative from Lebanon as well. And I know she's not here tonight, but Joanne is interested in that if...
She would be great.
Well, I think she's got the experience.
She's done the job for her.
Yeah.
She has the longevity on the board and the background knowledge. So, I would, if it is okay with you, if someone... We can discuss this, if you have...
If you guys want to take her down?
Yeah. Seriously.
Whatever your druthers.
Or if someone would like to make a motion to either vote individually or accept the slate of candidates for the committee, I leave that to you.
We can vote them together.
Okay. You making a motion, then?
I'll make a motion that we consider Astrid, Denise, and Joanne as the core of the hiring committee.
The second? All in favor? Can we vote?
Do we? I don't know.
We can vote. Do we have to vote, because we need a quorum?
I think you've got to.
It's totally okay to vote for yourself.
Yeah. I want to.
Okay. So, that's good. That's a nice... That'll be my next half-year.
Yeah.
So, I have a question. Are you... I don't know the...
Yeah.
You were listing off all of those. That was like 18 people. You really want to committee that back?
No. No. I think the or, the or is like two to three, and some of that is making, giving us the flexibility to make sure that we have representation from the three towns, but not, doesn't have to be three of each of those from each town, so maybe it's, you know, two administrators, two, like, just to get, to give us the flexibility to make sure that everybody's represented, but it doesn't have to be a one-to-one representation.
And who's going to pick the people on the hiring committee?
I think the three of us.
Yeah.
Because I have a concern about, how to say this politically correctly, hiring... Putting people on that committee that all think the same.
We're trying to do that.
You need to get people, not necessarily in the field of education, members of the community that maybe don't always agree with us...
Absolutely.
Politically, educationally, whatever the word is. I just think you need to have a diverse...
Absolutely.
So, that's come up, and I think that one of the things that we can do in January in forming the committee is to figure out what is the structure of that and what are the rules, like, how does that work? But there's no question that having a diverse... I think that's the whole point of it, is to have a diverse representation, but I agree that it's diversity of thought and opinion as much as geography.
Yeah. Because, I mean, like, and I didn't know this till later, but I thought on the construction committee, you know, there were the people from the parent community people, you know, were at that... Well, one of them is married to a teacher, a teacher of Lebanon, so he's really not...
As diverse as you thought. As diverse as you thought.
Not in education.
No.
You know, so I mean, nothing against him or anything, but I just think you need to be careful when you choose those people.
So I think that that's, you know, we are, we're saying that the three of us really do get to make those, you know, to kind of make sure that the whole of the committee is, covers it all versus like, okay, you're a good candidate, and you're a good candidate, but we want to make sure that the committee as a whole is the right makeup.
They did have a conversation about asking our student reps to be our student reps. And I think that's reasonable. You know, they will end up willingly giving up your time. So, and I think that's, that's something you guys can talk about.
It might, I don't know who would do this, Sue maybe? But I think at this point, it feels like it might be useful to have a, like consolidated timeline for the next couple of months with budget season. Like what are all of our deadlines?
I can do that.
Our meetings, like just to make sure, or even the...
We got a budget one recently.
You did, and what I'll do is I'll consolidate what Estrada is sharing. Can you share that timeline with me?
Can you email that? I think that was handed out at a meeting that I missed.
So if we do know that people who, anyone contacts us that is interested in being in the committee...
Send them along.
...or at TUIs and...
We have not yet discussed what...
Put something on the website?
Yep, we're gonna do that, but we haven't yet discussed like what happens after that, but definitely send them along. There's no like application form.
It's just let us know that you're interested. Tell us a little bit about yourself, so we have a sense.
And maybe ask their availability.
Absolutely, because there's gonna be a few intense sessions in there.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay, all right. So, let's see. All right, on to policy readings. We are going to postpone that because there was no meeting that happened to prepare.
So you have a motion to table that?
Please motion.
I'll make a motion to table the policy discussion.
Second.
I don't care, one of you, one of you guys.
Second, yes, okay. All in favor? Unanimous. Okay.
Okay, so we have a few things that we need to discuss tonight. I'm gonna start with the, when we had the resignation of Laura Lenahan as our Assistant Special Ed Director, Susan McRae's been scrambling to try to figure out the remainder of the year replacement, and she came up with a pretty solid plan. She has two candidates that are actually currently in-house, so that's helpful, who, what she's decided to do, because it will fill the void for the rest of the year, is to take two of her IEP coordinators and, you know, give them some added responsibilities to finish out the year. And I think that probably makes the most sense because it's pretty fluid, and they'll be able to just kind of step into the roles pretty easily. One is Nicole Winship. Nicole is currently the IEP Coordinator for the elementary, the Burwick Elementary's and Noble Middle School. And so Nicole would be moving into sort of this like quasi-admin role for the remainder of the year, starting January 2nd, if we're approving with that, till the end of the year. And she gets, you know, it's one of those pieces. The other person would be Mary Fitzgerald. Mary's been at the high school as the IEP Coordinator for many years, and so she runs the whole system up here in terms of the setting up IEPs and all of those things, running all those meetings. So the goal is that we can, that you guys are okay with that for this, the remainder of the year, and that we will open up those, that position going forward after the end of the year, and have some conversation about, does this work? Is it not working? There's an overall savings, actually, to do this, because we're not gonna fill those IEP coordinator positions, we're just gonna add a little responsibility on top of what they've been doing, and see how that works.
Who would be responsible for North Burwick and Lebanon?
So that's currently still, so Nicole will start, she'll spread out. Actually, Nicole, I apologize. Nicole does Lebanon, and she does Nolton, and she does the middle school. Mary does the high school, so they're gonna reconfigure some of this other stuff out, and it'll, everybody will be covered.
Okay.
Yeah. So I don't know what you need for information exactly. There's a, basically, about $31,000 over time, there's a savings. And everybody kind of steps up a little bit, so it gives them an equal administrative salary, $46,412 for the remainder of the year, each of them. And there's a 5% reduction. When we hire new administrators, we actually put them at 5% less than the contracted rate, just because it's brand new and they're doing their thing. So I think what I need is your approval. I need a hiring, yeah.
Question. Will the, will that position be put out for hire next year?
The position, so yes, that's the plan, is that we will look at how the year went, what they're made of, and is this a workable situation? If not, then it will go out again as a, I mean, she's gonna come back to you with her proposal no matter what, at the end of the year, based on what's happened.
Any further discussion or questions?
So I think I'm looking for a motion on hiring Nicole Winship and Mary Fitzgerald to step into the assistant director shoes, multiple shoes.
I'll make that motion.
In a second.
In a second.
All in favor? An excellent solution.
Yeah. It works.
All right. And so, then I have two more resignations. I actually have three, but I'm gonna start with two more resignations. One is, these you don't need to vote on. Nicole Bryant is an ed tech who was working with one of our students who, she focused specifically on brailing for him. She is moving to Guam, yeah, with her husband from, is in the service, and so, I know, that's a long commute, otherwise we can't do that. So Nicole, I'm just informing you of this one. And Meredith Towne is an ed tech in the North Burke Schools, and she is retiring. So I wish her the best, but bummer for us.
Do we have somebody else who can do braille?
We will be teaching somebody else to do braille, yeah. It's a good thing we're a school, right? We have to educate all the time. Okay. And now I have to read a letter of retirement. And so, this is from Brenda Gagne.
Oh, no.
And there she is out there. So I'm gonna read this, and hopefully I won't cry. But I could ask you to read it, but you'll probably cry too.
I think she will.
Yeah. So, Dear Superintendent Connolly and the Noble Community, it is with a wave of emotion I compose this letter to you, knowing it marks both endings and beginnings. After being part of the Noble Community for more than 30 years, I have decided to retire as of June 30th, 2020. It has been a pleasure serving the towns of North Burwick, Burwick, and Lebanon as an educator and administrator. While reflecting on my Noble journey, I discovered the many leaps of faith those around me have taken. In 1989, Jill Smith and I became the first team to contract share. Although Jill was an experienced educator, I was coming from the oil industry and had only taught geology labs in graduate school. I thank you for taking the risk. In 1994-95, I proudly became the first female science teacher at Noble Junior High, and even more thrilled to see many have followed. In 1999, I became the second adult education director of NACE, Noble Adult and Community Ed, where I have been able to grow professionally and personally. The confidence the community has had in me allowed me to develop an academic and enrichment program that is highly respected across the state of Maine. Staff have often been asked to share best practices at conferences nationally. I am so proud to be part of this team and grateful I have been encouraged to explore areas of growth that would never have been possible. I have been proud to give my best to our district and believe the additional funds brought in through grant writing has made life better for all of us. Moving forward, I look to support adult education throughout the state of Maine where I am able. Continue grant writing and being involved in both local and international humanitarian projects that have touched my heart, and support local literacy programs. On a more personal note, I look to redefine the image of a French mamet, being the grandchildren to all my favorite rock, bringing the grandchildren to all my favorite rock mineral collecting locations, and develop my fabric art and business skills to new levels. And as our brochure cover says, learn, grow, achieve, it's the nice way. Respectfully yours, Brenda Gagne.
Yay. Good job, Sue.
I know, it makes me sad. So...
I have a need a motion.
We need a motion for Brenda.
I'll make a motion to accept Brenda's retirement with regret.
I'll second that. I was gonna say, don't second it, anybody.
Yeah.
We tried that with Steve.
All in regretful favor?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you for all your service.
I want to say thank you for showing up to so many board meetings and educating us, because I think that I know more about your program than many other programs in the district.
And thank you, Patrick, for letting us have her for so long.
Yeah.
So I guess my last thought would be, can you open that door? For the audience, please.
Always being told what to do.
My name is Brenda Gagne, I'm the Director for Adult Education. I guess so, as you're talking with the building committees and they requested to look at space, just make sure that, it's, I always say, Sue's already laughing. Keep adult ed in mind, as we're growing and our needs change too. We're working with a very different population, as well as the principals in the buildings. So thank you.
Thank you.
And I would like to say that, Brenda, it is truly impressive, the way you've grown the adult ed program. I mean, I was on board when you started, and then faced opposition every year at the budget vote, and people didn't see the importance. And then it became so that everybody was supporting it, and it's just, it's so huge and so successful. And that's on you.
Yeah, totally on you.
Good job.
Thank you very much.
It's a good legacy.
Yes.
I choose to fill.
Yeah.
But I highly recommend retirement.
Be careful, because there are people who are out to ruin the retirement and put you back to work.
Okay. Yes, I mean, not for this, I do have something under other business.
All right, let's move on to other. Why don't you, do you need a moment to...
I just need to find my, where I put that little letter. I got a phone call this morning from a gentleman named Jason Randazzo, who asked me if he could give us $1,000 to put towards the Noble Middle School music program. And I said, of course you can give us $1,000. So he is, he sent a letter in requesting permission from the board to be able to donate $1,000 towards the music program, specifically to the band program. And I said I would absolutely bring it forward to you, and he said if you, if you say yes, I will drop it off on Monday in cash, and I would like to do things more going forward. So he is the beginning of our educational foundation, Jason Randazzo, poor guy.
Wasn't there a particular instrument that didn't make the final budget that was for the middle school band?
I thought we put it back in. I think we may have put it back in, but I think...
It was the baritone sax.
The baritone sax, that's it, we had the Viner Band.
Why does his name sound so familiar?
Jason was a Noble grad.
So was he a musician?
I think music was very important to him, yes. Yeah, so we had a nice chat this morning, so, yeah, that was a really nice Merry Christmas. So I just need a motion to accept $1,000 from Mr. Jason Randazzo.
I will excitedly make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Excitedly.
Okay, thank you.
Excellent.
It's awesome.
Okay, and Rebecca, I think you have...
Yeah, I have, I have a member of the community, Christine Dudley, who is North Burwick's town clerk, but she is a resident of Burwick, expressed an interest in becoming the, a race liaison for the administration. And I had to Google it and look up what that was, because I didn't really... I know she has, her family's a mixed-race family, so that's probably why she has the interest in it, but I think it's a good idea. I don't know how exactly that would work with, I mean, larger districts have, you know, a full-time person, not, like they have like an equality officer, or some districts like out in California, because they have so many different races of kids and immigrants, they have what are called parent liaisons, but they have like education degrees and social work degrees, and that they work with the parents to try to make sure they have all their, you know, that they know what is available to them in applying for programs and getting all the support they needed and stuff. But I couldn't really find anything about like, sort of a volunteer or part-time person to do that. And I'm sure there are regulations that you have to comply with and everything, so, but, you know, I just wanted, I told her I would bring it up, she didn't know how you would even go about trying to apply for something like that. And she also knows, I think her son's going to UNH now, and she knows one of the professors at UNH who she thinks would also be a good person to just have some input in, you know, he's good at like motivating and giving, talking to young people and giving them ideas for starting businesses and that kind of thing. So, you know, I definitely think there's, there are issues with minority people, persons of color in our society, and I know it's a very white state, and we have, like, I think the most significant minority we have is Native American, but, you know, I just, things you see in, hear in the news, and I know there have been issues with, like NSAD 60, a couple of years ago, somebody said, called something an N-word on the bus, and, you know, stuff like that does happen, so, I don't know, it's tough for kids that are in that position, and I think we should try to give them as much support as we can. So I just said I would bring it up and discuss it with the board, if the board's interested.
I'm happy to reach out to Christine and talk to her about what her thought process is on it, and what, I mean, part of my multiple hats is dealing with all things related to discrimination and things like that, and I'd be interested to see what she has for ideas and thoughts on it. I think it would be interesting to at least begin the conversation and see if there's something more that...
Is she volunteering for services? Because I'm not seeing a lot of money.
No, yeah, I know, I know.
And I think that's the reach out, is like, what are we looking at? What are we asking for? What does they ask here?
She does have a full-time job now, so, yeah, it was just like, there's a little bit of, you know, messaging back and forth, and I said I would check on it, I didn't want to say anything, because I didn't want to speak for the board, but, you know, she's a very level-headed person.
I would, I definitely think it would be, I mean, I think it's important, but I also think it would be very beneficial to just kind of have a lay of the land, and, you know, like some of the discussions we're having about, you know, what is a, what does a trauma-informed school look like? What is a equality, I don't even know what you call it, like what's, you know, I think that, what is, yeah, diversity awareness, and, so I would be interested in hearing, I guess, what she had in mind, but also, I would be interested in becoming educated by somebody.
We have policies that cover...
Sure. I mean, I think this is beyond, yes.
This is, yeah.
I think this is more of a, and I'm not speaking for Christine, my guess is that there's some level of personal observations that she would like to be able to talk about and see if there's ways to address things in a different manner. That's all, but I think that nobody ever does it quite right all the time, so I think there might be some things that we could do differently.
We don't have like an issue, she doesn't have like a major issue going on.
I don't think so, because, well, her son's not even in, he went through Noble, but he's in college now, so I think it's just more about wanting to have input. And, you know, I mean, the thing to me is like, I like to think that I'm not a racist person, but it's hard for you to, even if you try to be, you know, have empathy and treat everyone equally, it's like, I'm in a club. You know, a person who's not, who's not in the club is gonna see things differently than a person...
Perspective is everything.
Whether you want to be in that club or not, you know, so...
I can just do a little research if you want, and just talk with her and find out what she's thinking about, and keep it off of the, out of this conversation, and we can have her, if we feel like it's important, I'll put it out to you guys, and we can talk about having her come in and chatting with us in general.
I've read several heartbreaking accounts on the parents of site, and I know, you know, sometimes that's people with an axe to grind, but the stories are heartbreaking of children who've been treated, bullied, the Noble Parents site.
I mean, right, it's everywhere.
Yeah.
And it doesn't, it happens on another level than our policies or an incident being reported to administration like this is, it's just a whole other level that never...
We need a safe way for children to address the bullying when it happens, which they're supposed to anyway, but, to be honest, our society is changing so much that the labels just don't apply to very many people anymore. Everybody's missing something.
It's true. Do you need a motion?
I don't think so, as long as you're okay with it, I'll reach out to Christine and have a conversation, sure.
Sounds good, and right in your purview, too.
Yeah.
Of many things.
I appreciate it when people speak up. Yeah, for sure.
Especially since she doesn't have children in the school anymore, but she still cares about, you know, the existing population here.
Right, I think we have gotten to number 13. Oh, no, wait, we have public input. Any other desire for others or public input?
Are you guys here because of that class? Okay. A little sigh for you.
Okay. In that case, can I have a motion to adjourn? So that we can then go...
This new brochure, she's right up with it.
And a second?
I'll second.
Operation on fire tonight. Eight o'clock, guys, not bad.
15 minutes early.
All right.
Will we use the executive session? When you come back out, there's no further business.
There's no further business, we're doing a workshop.
So it's actually not an executive session, it's a workshop, but so, but yes, but no further business.
Conversation.